I'd like to call the May 21st, 2012, Special Meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commissions together. First item of business is our invocation by the Reverend Tim Taylor, Associate Pastor of the First Baptist Church on Clinton Street. And then after the -- we please stand for the prayer and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Like to thank everyone for coming out. For this is -- we must be about our Father's business. Gracious Heavenly Father, most holy and all wise God, once again we have come to do your business this day, dear Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we come to you now in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, we pray for the city commission leaders, let your Spirit rest upon them. We believe that the skillful and godly wisdom has entered into the hearts of our city commission, and that they will do your will. Heavenly Father, we come to ask that they do -- they have hearts and ears attentive to your godly counsel. Lord, make them women and men of your integrity, that they may lead a quiet and peaceful life in godliness and honesty. I pray that the wicked ones will be cut off and rooted out. Heavenly Father, you are our refuge and our stronghold in times of trouble. Dear Lord, so we declare with our mouths that your people dwell safely in this city. We prosper abundantly. Lord, we pray that we follow our leadership as they follow you. Lead those, Lord Jesus, to be reminded daily that they are a camel to you, Almighty God, for their position and for the way they handle themselves. For the decisions they make will influence not only the present day, but also future of this city. We give thanks for this city and the commissioners you have given us. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Taylor, we thank you very much for being with us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here. All the votes counted for. Thank you, those who are with us here today. We thank you for being present. The next item we have would be citizens' comments. For those that may not be aware, we have a special meeting, citizens' minutes. Please excuse the runder. We were supposed to have the minutes. Okay. We have had opportunity to view the minutes. Is there any motion to accept them at this time?
Summarize.
You got a motion to accept them by Commissioner Wilder is the second?
Second.
And Mr. Hayden, any additions or deletions or suggestions? Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the minutes are approved. There's been no ceremony items, so next we have the citizen comments. And the citizen comments, we let citizens to keep their comments, please, to within around a five-minute limit. And since it's special meeting, comments have to address only agenda items. Okay, we have a hand. Please come forward to the mic, phone, and please identify yourself for the record.
I hope I'm in the right place on the schedule there. My name is Danny Garland. I am here representing Rosam. I am the vice chairman of that board. Our board chairman had a conflict today and cannot be here. I'm going to be very brief. We're asking that to remain on your budget for the upcoming year. And I will say this, the very nice prayer talked about the present and the future, and I certainly agree with that, but I also want to celebrate the past. And we're celebrating our 30th year, Rosam is, and Ms. Aileen Randstall, who came in, is celebrating her 30th year of service with Rosam. I think that's both -- they are both remarkable. We are an agency who acts as a clearinghouse and also for various churches and other groups, for people that need the system, and to keep people from working the system. I think they're very effective in that. And also, we do, of course, fund lots of dollars to people in need. I'll point out one fact, and that'll be it for me. We had, in the 10 months ending in April, we had 1,552 requests for aid. That included 2,139 adults, 1,583 children. The amount requested was $490,000. We were able to fulfill 796 of those, which included 1,055 adults and 800 children. So you can see that we work hard and are very frugal and try to help as many people as we can, but the situation is very dire as far as people needing aid. So we respectfully request that you continue to fund us in your budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments we made? Okay, any other citizen comments?
Yes, sir. My name is Andrew Baker. I'm the executive director of the Access Soup Kitchen. I would also like to request that we remain funded through the budget of the City of Frankfurt in the upcoming year. Just like Danny just mentioned, in 2011, we also served a tremendous amount of people. We served, during lunchtime, we served 21,685 meals in 2011 alone. We're already on par to be serving that many more. We've had about 78, 79 men stay in our shelter so far this year, since beginning of December. We would not survive without you all and other agencies in Frankfurt, and we would like to remain on your budget for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll be hopefully addressing the issues raised by the last two speakers, hopefully today, and I hope we do. I don't know what time it will be around to it. All right, next is the ordinances. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 4.1, by title, this is an ordinance providing for the City of Frankfurt's purchase of vacant, unimproved property within the city for redevelopment purposes. Summary, this ordinance establishes a program to redevelop vacant, unimproved properties located in the city by authorizing the city to release city liens against the property in return for the conveyance of the property to the city. Any other liens existing against the property would have to be released, so that when the property is conveyed to the city, it is not subject to any liens. The property would then be sold by a sealed bid or auction. This is the second reading.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion, Commissioner May? Motion for approval, the second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilder. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.1 is approved.
Ordinance 4.2, by title, an ordinance regulating purchase, possession, retail, sale, and use of fireworks within the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky. Summary, this ordinance creates the -- excuse me, this ordinance regulates the purchase, possession, retail, sale, and use of fireworks within the City of Frankfurt. Fireworks designed as consumer fireworks can be sold and used in the city limits during the time set forth in the ordinance. Displayed fireworks cannot be sold or used in the city, subject to certain exceptions, including public displays of fireworks by the city or other organizations approved by the fire chief. Seasonal fireworks retailers are required to pay a permit fee of $250 per year, and permanent fireworks retailers are required to pay a fee of $1,000 per year. A fine of not less than $50 per day, nor more than $500 per day, is provided for violators of the ordinance, and the fireworks of the violators are to be confiscated.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding ordinance 4.2? Summarize. Mr. Turner? Motion for approval? Second. Commissioner May?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wilder?
If I could just clarify for everyone's understanding, the purpose of this ordinance change is to take the local regulations regarding fireworks back to where the state regs were a couple of years ago. I'm sure some folks remember that state regulations were eased pretty heavily last Fourth of July, and the city received hundreds of complaints, and we had some safety concerns from staff as well. So the purpose of the ordinance is just to take us back to where we were two years ago.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hayden?
It's also my understanding that majority of fiscal court, although it hasn't been brought up for them, but a majority of them are looking to be on the same page as the city, which if the city and the county are on the same page, it only makes sense to go ahead and pass this ordinance.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
No. Ordinance 4.2 gives it up.
Ordinance 4.3, by title, an ordinance amending Chapter 40, Police Department and Fire Department, Sections 40.02 through 40.06, 40.15 through 40.17, 40.19, 40.21 through 40.24, 40.30, 40.32 through 40.40, 40.49, 40.52 through 40.53, and 40.57 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 40 of the Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to organize and update provisions of the city's Civil Service Board, appointment promotional processes for police and fire positions, and various sections relating to the Police Department and the Fire Department. This ordinance revises Sections 40.02 through 40.06, 40.15 through 40.17, 40.19, 40.21 through 40.24, 40.30, 40.32 through 40.38, 40.49, 40.52 through 40.53, and 40.57 of Chapter 40, in order to improve the selection processes, clarify roles and responsibilities, reflect new laws enacted since the original ordinance was created, and amend the organization of the chapter to improve its readability. And I would point out that, if you'll recall, at the first reading, there were several instances where additional language was added in the first reading, and that language has been incorporated into this version. So this is definitely the same as the document that was read the first time.
Okay, you have any motion pertaining to ordinance 4.3? Commissioner May, on approval, second? Mr. Turner, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
I'm sorry it took so long, but yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.2 is adopted. Mr. Moore?
Ordinance 4.4, this is the first reading, by title, an ordinance amending ordinance number one, 2012 series, appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for the fiscal year 2011-2012. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2011-2012 to include grants received after the initial budget was passed. These additional grants total $184,415. All amounts will be reimbursed by the various funding agencies.
Okay, without objection, we will accept the first reading. Okay, first reading accepted. Okay, now we're down to the orders being done, resolutions being done, a consent calendar. Mr. Goines?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Item 7.1, to authorize the mayor to sign the 2011-2012 Annual Audit Engagement Letter between Mountjoy Chilton Medley LLP and the City of Frankfurt. The total payment for the audit would be $29,990. Item 7.2, to authorize the mayor to sign the revised collateral surety agreement with Community Trust Bank and all related documents. This contract revision changes the collateral custodian to Morgan Keegan &amp; Company. Item 7.3, to authorize award of a professional services agreement to Revenue Recovery Corporation, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with this agreement. This authorizes them to proceed with legal action on all unpaid accounts owed to the City Sewer Department. Item 7.4, to authorize rejection of bids for installation of approximately 1,100 feet of 2-inch PVC forced main along Glens Creek Road. And due to the wide variance between the engineer's estimate and the low bid, the sewer department will evaluate other options in the future. Item 7.5, authorization to award contract to Arts Electric for installation of security cameras at various locations at the wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the project. The low bid on this is in the amount of $10,240. Item 7.6, approval to change order two for the East Frankfurt Pump Station, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents associated with this project. This is actually a reduction of $30,766, which makes the new total $2,29,570. Item 7.7, to authorize a sewer extension contract with Logan's Roadhouse for 141 Beazak Boulevard located off Duncan Road in Franklin County, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the contract. Item 7.8, authorization to award contract to Reynolds Inliner LLC for the rehabilitation of approximately 18,000 feet of sanitary sewer mains in the Two Creek subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the project. The project was publicly advertised and bids were received and opened on April 27. The lowest qualified bid was $695,000. Item 7.9, to consider authorizing and application for highway safety grant funds, and authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. This will be for reimbursement for manpower over time and use of equipment with the Police Department while participating in this program. The grant request for 2013 will not exceed $152,000, and there is no match required. Item 7.10, to authorize the mayor to sign the 2011 litter abatement forms through the Kentucky Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Cabinet. The city anticipates receiving $14,124.43 from the Kentucky Natural Resources Cabinet in 2011. Item 7.11, to authorize the mayor to sign the 2011 KPDES MS4 Annual Compliance Report. This is a Phase II stormwater permit, requires the city and the county to evaluate its stormwater system and further develop its stormwater quality program. Item 7.12, considering awarding a contract to Allied Technical Services Incorporated to provide a hydraulic power unit and two pump heads, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the purchase. The bid is recommended be awarded to Allied Technical Services Incorporated, who is the lowest responsible bidder, at $74,210 for the hydraulic power unit and two pump heads. Item 7.13, to authorize Amendment Number One to an engineering contract with Strand Associates Incorporated for an engineering design on repairing or replacing the two interceptor lines along Kentucky Avenue, to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to this project, and to approve the condemnation of property that may be required for this project. These design services, Amendment One raises the contract to a total of $270,000. Item 7.14, to authorize a purchase of eight 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Patrol Vehicles for the Police Department. The cost for each vehicle, total cost for each vehicle, including the outfit, is $39,706.34 per vehicle, and these are purchased through the state price contract. Item 7.15, to authorize approval of change order three, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the contract with Schroeder Construction for installation of gravity lines and forced mains to contract one of the East Frankfurt Project for sewer collection system. The total contract amount is unchanged and will be remain $3,615,865. Item 7.16, to authorize change order number one to the contract with Calcrith Roofing and Shoot Metal for the City Hall Roof Project. The contract price will increase by $7,283.47, or a new contract price of $190,589.16. Item 7.17, to ratify a purchase order with Columbia Gas that will be used to purchase concrete for the Myrtle Avenue Sidewalk replacement, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This will be a low bid of $73 per cubic yard submitted by Herred Concrete &amp; Stone. Item 7.18, to authorize approval of an agreement between the City of Frankfurt and Timber Framers Guild Incorporated to build a timber-framed pavilion in the upper meadow of Cold Spring Park, and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents. The total cost for the pavilion is $60,000, and the contract with Timber Framers is in the amount of $30,199. The City Parks Department has received a grant of $30,000 and will be used to pay one-half of the cost. Item 7.19, our personnel actions. The first four are the Police Department appointments of Jerry E. Dryer, Patrol Officer One, Pete B. Peaton, Patrol Officer One, Luther R. Cummins, Patrol Officer One, Winfer S. Music, Patrol Officer One. And then there's one resignation, Darrell Oliver, Public Works Tech, and authorize payment for a free leave. Mayor, this concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, so I have a motion pertaining to consent calendar. You got it?
Motion.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, to the first. And Commissioner Turner, to the second. Any comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so consent calendar is adopted. Next on the agenda are board appointments being done. I had hoped to have, you know, earlier someone. We have two, there's two positions on two boards, and I'm still trying to get filled. One is the Architecture Review Board. We need an architect. We've advertised in the paper and what have you, but have not gotten anyone to step forward yet to that. I thought I had a person for the code enforcement, but just a few days ago, she informed me that health causes, so I hope to have someone next time. The --
I believe we also need to fill the Cine-Humane Society Board.
We do have, is there a vacancy that we had to fill? I'm not sure.
I thought they had asked.
Well, we'll do that, we'll work on that next time, okay? I'm not aware of that one. Yeah. All right, next we have full business. Mr. Goines, take over here.
Thank you, Mayor. We had quite a lengthy discussion at our last meeting about the proposed 2012-2013 budget for the City of Frankfurt. And Mr. Dolph, our finance director, come forward, please.
If I could, I'm going to try to recap a little bit what we talked about last time. Sorry, I'm getting used to these glasses, so I'm kind of struggling here. Anyway, I want to go cover real quickly, if I could, where we kind of ended the discussion last meeting, and then I'll go into what we've come up with since that discussion. And the first thing I'd like to say is, just to recap, our proposal receipts, as we were discussing for the 2012-13 budget, is $31,043. That's what our receipts are, look like they're going to be for our proposal, and that number hasn't changed. And our proposed expenditure level for last, the last meeting was $32,726. So the amount of deficit that we were looking at was $1,682.7. Okay, and then at the last of the meeting, Fred had gone through 14 proposals that we had, or actually 13 proposals for cost reduction. And so basically what we did since the last meeting is we walked back to the managers and talked to some of the managers, and I gave them a printout of a target level to try to get their expenses down too. And they went through their, with their departments, and discussed how can we reduce our expenditures to another level. And so that was one of the things. Also, I went back with HR, talked with HR to get some more information, and then we talked about the hiring freeze. So this is what we've come up with since the last time we met. And we sent this information, I think, to you all several days ago, but, or maybe Friday. But here's what we've come up with so far. We requested the department managers to reduce 1% of their overhead, or reduce their overhead by 1%, and that would have been about $80,000, is what it would have been, $80,642. But we've come up with a counterproposal of $57,017 from the managers right now, that they've been able to go back and pull down some of their costs. And I spent a couple of days, you know, inputting that data, so we've got that input into the budget. Also, went back and talked with HR about the carve-out of the working spouses that have healthcare coverage right now. Now, we can take out approximately a half a year's cost there for that. We couldn't, you know, the 233 on there was a full year. But of course, we can't make this effective until January, and we need some time to educate and talk to our employees out of fairness to them. So we feel like we can implement that program at the beginning of January, so we can get a half-year savings. So that's approximately $100,000. And that's item number nine. And then we talked about a hiring freeze, which, you know, I mean, that's easy to say, but it's more difficult to implement. But we've, you know, we've hired some folks in public safety over the last year. We feel like we can make another stab at this hiring freeze, and that would save about $300,000. And also, I had another line item. I mentioned last week that we had budgeted originally eight police vehicles in the budget. We took out six because we thought we could reduce that and pay for those items in this budget period we're in now. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we added, we made it eight, full eight. So I had two vehicles in there, so I pulled those two vehicles. So that's $67,800. So if you add those up, total them up, it's about $525,000. It makes the net loss, it was $1,682.7, it now becomes $1,158, approximately. That's what we've got our loss to at this point for the 12-13 budget period. So that's where we are.
Mr. Goind, you want everything?
No, I really don't have much to add, except that we've been, we've been back to the departments several times with this, and we had hoped to cut 1% across the board in departments, but some departments had already given, had already given up quite a bit, and had agreed to buy things out of other accounts. It reduced the burden by going ahead and making purchases in the present fiscal year that we're about to finish, so...
Fred, one thing I might add, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Insurance was on that list of things that we could reduce, about $9,000, and, you know, I think Commissioner Turner mentioned that we were in a soft market, but it's starting to, it's starting to harden up now, and I'm, I'm afraid to change that number at this point, so that was nine, you know, that was 9,000, that 80,000, and we just, I don't think we can make that work at this point. I'll be afraid to change that number at this point, so...
Also, we, we investigated the possibility of increasing the insurance premium tax, which if, if the Commission did that, could raise a significant amount of money, but because of legal requirements and KRS requirements, we've already missed the deadline for that in this particular budget cycle.
Good point. So we have to have all the paperwork in, the ordinance to change that by May 23rd in order to make that happen. March 23rd, right?
March, March.
March 23rd.
And, Commission, we, we had not made a final decision on the agency request, and those totaled $90,817. It was, it was our feeling from remarks at the last meeting that the Commission didn't, did not wish to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed a consensus that the Commission did not wish to reduce that total amount. Is that incorrect?
I don't wish to.
Or did you want to discuss agency requests?
Yes, we can do that. We can do that now, if you'd like, and then come back to the proposal from, that's been presented to us. Now, where I stand is, I'm pretty much where it was, keeping like it was last year, that, and, and in fact, the $2,000 that, that Push received last year, that's gone. I would like to put that back in, the $2,000, and for the Grand Theater. But then this is where I was stuck with that. Okay, not be willing to act with the rest of you, which we, who decide them. So Commissioner Hayden, you first, then Commissioner Wilder.
I would, I would like to see us match the requested amount for the Save the Grand Theater for 10,000 versus the 5,000 that we have previously given. I'd like to see that up.
The which one now?
The Save the Grand Theater, they've requested 10,000, they requested 10,000 last year as well. We still only budget a five. I actually would like to see us try to give them their full 10,000.
The full 10,000. Are you suggesting to keep the total amount the same?
That we would...
Would you...
That we would take money from another...
Took last, yeah, had shipped money around internally?
I don't know how we can do that and still provide the same services. Everybody's hurting in this community.
So you, you're suggesting to add $5,000 to...
And can I get some clarification on what the South Frankfurt Park is for, the $7,500?
Mr. McCarty from Parks.
Thank you.
They run a community summer program, they have a dollygram park, that money is used for people that work there, supplies and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder, you were next, and Commissioner May.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to stick to the agency request, a couple of things. I guess, first of all, right off the bat, the, I know the Grand has approached all of us about increasing their agency requests, or their, their agency funding. I think a number of the agencies have requested increases in funding. What I told the Grand is that I, you know, I'd be happy to consider that, but only after balancing the budget. So I just assume we get the budget balance first and see if we can, see if we can find the money for that, because that's not something I'd be inclined to, that's something I'm happy, that's, that's a line that I'm happy to increase if we have the funds available in our budget. I'd be hesitant to overspend on that. In general terms, but this does relate to the agency spending, I'm still in favor of 1% across the board, cut, and that's something that the Commission budget could absorb, just in terms of the, the push, you know, keeping the, the push funding out, and we could absorb the rest in our travel budget. So as in, as in, what, I guess what I'm saying is that the Commission could take a 1% cut to the Commission budget without actually impacting any of, without having a negative impact on any of our agency's funding. Because I am, I am supportive of maintaining what we've already got in place. Like I said, I'd be hesitant to, to increase any agency's funding until we, until we know we can afford to do it.
So cut the, your, your proposals, maybe to cut the Commissioners, to the Commission budget that we have, the line item there that we have?
I mean, if we're gonna ask every department to take a 1% cut, we would, we would need to take it ourselves, I think.
I think that's a good idea.
But, but I'm saying that we could, we could absorb that, just, just in the, in the push funding. That's, that's $2,000 gone right there. And the rest could come out of our, our, our travel budget, which we don't use very much anymore.
Yeah.
And that's...
I don't think I've used it at all.
Okay, go.
Yeah, in terms of the...
Commissioner May.
Mayor, I, I do think that we definitely need to look at increasing Rosam by their request, because they've had a huge strain on them the last, well, going back five, six years, I know. And we really have seen a huge increase in people who, who need help. But the one good thing is, as Mr. Garland said earlier, and by the way, we should recognize Danny Garland, because he's a former city commissioner, former mayor pro temp, for his service. I always think it's good when we have folks come back, we should at least say thanks for, they've sat on these, and up here and made these decisions before, so thanks for your continued service. And, and to Eileen Randstall and the other folks from, from Rosam who are here, that these folks are literally in the, there's people on the front lines, these folks are in the trenches with what they're doing. And walking through the neighborhoods, I think, just have noticed that there's this much more need than I've ever seen in this community. And we've heard the report from Rosam, and we've heard the report from the, from access from the soup kitchen, and just right now, as, as we hopefully get to see the light at the end of the tunnel from this recession, it's still gonna take a while for some folks in our community who have the most need to see that relief for them. And I think that we need to remember that. It's gonna take them longer to recover as, as, as we try to pull out of this recession, so I think at this point, I would be willing to take money from our reserve account to give to the agencies that are helping people who are absolutely, without a doubt, unable to help themselves at this time. Some of these folks have been unemployed for months, and they don't have the means to take care of their, their families who have small children. So I would say that I would strongly encourage us to, to take care of that need. And also, I do support the Grand Theater too, as the other agencies, so I think those are critical areas to help Rosam. I don't think the, let's see, there was not, there were, you weren't asking for an increase in, in the access shelter, but, let's see who else. But anyway, those are, I think, are critical needs when we're talking about what Rosam does. And, and again, to point out too, that they're making sure that people are not abusing the system. These are people who actually have a need that are being screened, and I think it's important.
But you stay in, that's the Rosam's request for 45 to be acknowledged?
Yes, sir.
Rather than the 20?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And support the Grand.
Yes.
And I support the other agencies as well, but...
And you support the, the Grand?
Yes, sir.
For the 10?
Yes. Because I, I was gonna say, I've heard first, I saw firsthand, when I taught some, a drum class, how many children are affected by programs, arts programs and theater programs that, that they would not have had access to had it not been for places like the Grand. And the King Center.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I'm just, I guess when talking about agency requests, I, I think one of my areas of concern are maybe the idea of duplication of services. And one in particular that I'm, was hoping maybe Steve could answer some more questions on, I think I've lost him, there he is, is, right now, we fund the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program as well as the Franklin County Council on Family Abuse. Both of those organizations are devoted to domestic violence. I noticed that the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program's not here in Franklin County, it's based out of Lexington. Is that something that, I mean, is that necessarily a duplication of services there? Or, and/or could we divert that money going to the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program to the Franklin County Council on Family Abuse?
Sorry, I'm gonna defer on this question. Keep going, White, he's got a little more information. Commissioners, you may recall, this question came up last year.
I do remember it.
And at the time, I said, I really don't know what they do for us, the Lexington group, and quite frankly, I still don't know. I, I do know what the Franklin County Council does, but as far as the, the Bluegrass Shelter, I mean, you know, we have shelter programs here in our community. I believe a call was placed to them last year, but I did not speak to them. I don't know if Mr. Dawson spoke to them or not, but I know last year, they did not send in a request. This is just kind of an ongoing payment that we've been making since before I was chief. So, you know, I, I, I really don't know.
Let me address, if I could, what his comment is now. It was a, it was a couple of years ago, we didn't get a request, a formal request from them. So I, you know, I called and conferred with those guys and got the formal request. And then the last several years, they've given us, and I can't recall the date of this year, I haven't had as much time to spend on this agency request as, as I did in previous budget periods, but we did get the number of Franklin County folks that were being served by them. And I can't recall what the numbers were, but it was 100-plus folks that were, that had been served by Bluegrass. So we, you know, they've got that data and they can provide that information, but it may be in your pocket, I'm not sure.
I mean, the numbers of who they were serving, you know, like, for example, you have an emergency shelter, where they serve 17 people from Franklin County. Under the city, it's unknown as to what they're serving, so we just get numbers as to who they're serving throughout the county. They helped 152 residents with legal advocacy, and then 176 residents got just information and a referral. So with regards, for example, the emergency shelter, I mean, I'm, we have one of those, I think, don't we, in Franklin County? Does the Council on Family Abuse or any of the other organizations that we support provide legal advocacy for, for their people that they're serving?
I can't answer that, I don't know for sure.
Commissioner May, you said?
Thanks, Mayor. The Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program is, is an agency that helps some pretty extreme situations with violence. Our shelter here is limited in its space, and this is also one where people need to be taken out of the community for violent acts committed or, or against them or against their children. And a lot of times, it's a spouse, well, usually a female trying to leave, an abusive spouse or boyfriend, who has been involved with physical violence. And this is a safety issue, when we've had those extreme cases, where no other agency really serves that, to where this, this is, our folks wouldn't even know, I'm sure that some of the police officers in the past have been involved in any of some cases. I know of a couple of instances I can remember a few years back, but what happens is, when a local, someone from Frankfurt transports one of the females or the female and her children, they are met, they are met at a secure location, and then the family is taken to where the shelter location is. So if someone here, if a police officer were to take someone to this, to Lexington and drop them, the agency, the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program, folks would meet that officer or volunteer from Frankfurt, maybe at a parking lot of a hotel or someplace, and then they would make that exchange, and then they would be taken to a secure location. That's what this program has provided in the past, unless they've changed submission, I don't believe they have. We could, I mean, if we need to get more information, then I certainly respect Commissioner Turner wanting to, to find that out, and I'm sure it's easy enough to, to get that if, if needed. That, that's what they have done in the past.
And you support it, but keeping it in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Turner, do you have any comments after hearing that explanation?
No, I mean, I, it's still seems somewhat ambiguous to me as to, is it a duplication of services with regards to the Council on Family Abuse? I mean, I understand the extreme circumstances and have volunteered a number, or quite a bit with the Council on Family Abuse. I mean, if it's something that the Council on Family Abuse could handle, then I'm more than happy to consider, I mean, if we're considering something to remove or cut back, that would be one, just simply because we have an organization in our own county that is doing similar services, which did not ask for a funding increase, unlike the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program. You know, that, that money, while it being, being used for Franklin County residents, I wonder if the Council on Family Abuse here in Franklin County could do the same thing with that money that, that the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program has. And I'm just not sure, you know, if, if they can, or what the scope of Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program services are.
I think, I think if you look on page two of the documentation provided by Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program, if you look at the bottom of the page where it says, list the total unduplicated count per person served by year, you can see some of that information in there. But, but again, if people aren't sure, then they should feel comfortable and we can ask questions.
Any other ideas about dealing with this particular part of the budget? Mr. Wilder?
Mayor, it sounds like we have pretty broad support for at least maintaining current funding levels where the agencies were still funding, not counting...
not counting for shovels. And again, before we get into a discussion about whether or not to increase any other agency's funding, I really think that it would be wise for us to go through the rest of the budget and to do our best to get it in balance and see where we stand before having a discussion about whether or not to spend more money in any given area.
What's the feeling of other people? You want to drop it now and go on the budget? Or you want to deal with it today?
I think probably we'd get a regular budget. Then we can make a better decision and see where we're at and what we agree on. And then come back.
Is there somebody, anyone else in support of that?
I'll support that.
Okay, just move on. Just get back to the proposal that Mr. Dawson, when we start dealing with the recommendations that we received today, the changes.
I've got some more information. I want to share something with you to show you the kind of struggles that we're having. I prepared a reconciliation.
Please, please.
This information might be useful to kind of understand where we are today. What I've done is I've reconciled expenses from last year to this year. And let me give you some of our dilemma and why we're struggling to try to get this thing. I know that Commissioner Wilder had mentioned trying to get the break even. And let me tell you why it's a struggle right now. In 2011 and '12, our original budget costs, which was approved, was $31,000, $31,162,000 approximately. Here are the changes that we made over the last year that either through an amendment or through natural increases impacted our budget funding. We had a 2% wage increase of $400,000. We had our garbage carts, a five-year lease program, $200,000 a year. We had a garbage compliance officer, $62,000. Had an energy sustainability coordinator. Last year, we had a one-third of the budget and one-third of the salary in there. But this year, I added the other two-thirds to make it 100% funded by the city. So, the increase was $44,588 approximately. Had pension cost increases of $200,000. Healthcare increased $250,000. We hired six firemen. We hired four policemen. So, the total of all those changes is about $1,565,000. That brought us to the $32.7 million. So, biggest bulk of that, those changes are, you know, wage increases or wage benefit increases. About 93% of that cost is that. It's fixed cost. It doesn't go away. And the only way to start trimming away at that is to do, you know, start talking about furloughs or talking about, you know, worse things. So, that's kind of where we are. I mean, that's why we're out of sync. And our revenues are only $31 million at best. So, that's why we're struggling. We've carved out, you know, we've carved out half a million from that $32.7. But that's about all we can carve out right now, unless we're talking about, you know, some rate increases or some revenue increases. These folks are, these folks back here are really struggling with this at this point. So, that's kind of where we are. And that's...
Okay, Commissioner Wilder.
I mean, I just assume that we avoid the politics of all this and just talk in very practical terms about what we need to do to get this budget under control. But as long as this is gonna be a political discussion, I guess I'll just point out that this budget would be, that we would be coming in under budget this year if we weren't making so many expenditures to take the pressure off of next year's budget, such as the eight police cars we just bought, et cetera. And at the end of the day, I mean, most departments are requesting an increase in their budget with a couple of exceptions. The commission isn't requesting an increase. And the Public Works Department, which handles the garbage program and the sustainability coordinator is one of the only departments actually requesting a budget decrease this year. And we ended the budget discussion last week, agreeing to come back this week and go through, actually go through the budget line by line. And as I said then, I've got about, what I think are about $250,000 worth of very small cuts here and there that we can make. And I'm happy to talk about revenue as well. But if the, I mean, if the commission's willing, I'm happy to go ahead and start going through this thing line by line and figure out where we can make cuts of a thousand here and a thousand there. Because that stuff, you know, you do that 250 times and you save a quarter million dollars.
Can I ask some questions before we do that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Is that okay, Commissioner Wilder?
That's fine, ma'am.
Thank you. With the bond at the public safety building, that's a million dollars that we're paying a year, what's that rate at?
It's approximately 3.5% to 4%. It's approximately 3.5% to 4%.
Okay. If we refinance that, can we get a cheaper rate?
Anytime, for example, you go through a bonding procedure, well, basically, that rate is very competitive.
Okay.
We just issued a bond at maybe 2.9% that had a tax exempt feature to it. So, we were right. We were right at the levels we were when we did the actual bond for the building.
Okay.
And another thing you've got to consider is you've got some front-end costs. And anytime you issue a bond, you know, you've got some, that changes your effective interest rate because you've got the closing cost. And closing cost for a bond issued is approximately anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 with a closing cost, which you would incur again if you, you know, if you tried to change, you know, change the rate on a bond. But it's really competitive right now. We're pretty much in line with where the market is today.
Okay.
No big...
It was just a thought, trying to think about saving some money versus spending a million. If we could drop that to maybe save $200,000, that's, might be worth it. And we still have the grants we need to pay at about $148,000 that was just read in the last budget, right?
Yeah, the grants are pretty much a flow-through item on the budget. So, money coming in, money going out, so.
And as for, instead of talking about expenses so much, what about trying to get some revenues, some other revenue streams? Should we save that for a different day for discussions?
Think it's part of this discussion?
An unpopular thing was that, you know, as the city, we're kind of locked in. But if we could increase our tax base, if even, if there's any neighborhoods that might even want to be annexed through the city, I don't know if that's worth trying to look at. And so, it's a city only being this big and the county being this big and able to expand, we're kind of landlocked. But if annexation's something, maybe doing a feasibility study and increase our tax base so that people can provide with our, and live with our services, I don't know if that's something the rest of the commission or departments want to look at. Parking meters, I don't know how much revenue could be gained with that, especially with the courthouse, once that's done in the next, what, 16 to 18 months? If that's something we as a city should go ahead and start looking at?
Well, let me say what we've brought in so far, just a little history. From the parking system right now, I think we're gonna bring in about $25,000 on parking fines. I don't know what kind of revenue that would generate, but it's...
And that's with fines. But do we have any idea how much revenue we could get based on parking meters?
I haven't done a study. I don't know. Chief Hill, you've done the study on that?
No, this was discussed last year or the year before. And in fact, I think we had a proposal from an individual, a private person that came up with that. But just by looking at it and talking with Central Parking last time, it's gonna take a significant investment in the meters themselves.
Right, right.
And of course, someone to tend the meters.
I mean, there's always gonna be an upfront cost to try to get things done 98% of the time.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
There certainly will be with meters.
Right.
But, you know, depending on the kind you get, whether it's simply the smart meters that you can get, of course, now with debit cards and things like that. From what I'm reading, those are the types that get you more money. Because, you know, if you spend a little extra money for a little more sophisticated meter, it gives a person more options to pay, then they're more likely to comply. But as far as any hard cost, I don't know, but it's significant.
And I guess the, you know, any other revenue streams might seem a little tacky, but you could always sell ads on the buses. I guess we can just get back to the expense side.
I might be able to point one thing out, too. Just recently, the data that I sent you on Friday, I don't know if you've got that information in front of you, the preliminary draft, the fifth version there. But if you look at the bottom of the first two columns, B and C, and there's a comparison there on line number 50 that shows, and I'll just summarize this for you if you don't have it in front of you. But on B and C on that summary sheet on line 50, it shows you the increases from over last year's budget from this year's budget. And it's basically, it's coming from benefits and personnel costs.
Right.
There's, you know, $600,000 increase right there from personnel benefits. And the budget over last time is $446,000. So, all your increase there is coming from later benefit costs. It's not coming from any other request. Everybody else's budget's pretty much, you know, pretty much fixed at this point.
Excuse me, Mr. Dawson, can you identify the sheet that you're discussing?
Yeah, it's the preliminary draft, fifth version. It says 5/21/12 on it. And it's the very first page when you print out your, print out from Friday's email that I sent out.
I don't have it printed out. I just got the fourth version.
It's dated?
It's dated 5/21/12. The information I sent Friday. I think maybe Katie, you've got it there right?
Well, I got it on the email.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I sent that email maybe in the afternoon. But in summary, if you, the personnel costs are basically labor increased over last budget by almost $136,000. And benefits costs went up $462,000. You know, that's, you know, it's about a $600,000 increase right there. And the total increase was $446,000. So, you know, it's basically labor and benefits. Everybody else, you know, what's happening is this pie is just squeezing everything else out. And so, that, you know, the management's already taking their budgets down to kind of offset some of that steam. So, that's, you know, that's kind of what's, that's the dilemma that we're battling right now is our wages and benefits just pushing everything else out.
How do we maintain that? What's your recommendation?
Well...
To keep that pie from getting bigger?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's kind of a structural imbalance. And the thing we need to do is, and I think the labor frees, you know, addresses some of that issue because, you know, labor and benefits makes up such a huge portion. 73% of our budget's labor and benefits. So, I think the freeze, you know, addresses some of that. You've just got to freeze and let things catch up. That's what we've got to do if we can't raise our revenue stream at this point.
Okay, Mr. Goins.
In the last three years, the City Commission has deferred purchases. And we've bought quite a few capital purchases out of other accounts. That's helped us get through those short-term periods. But what that has done is pushed us into a corner where the only significant amounts or only significant items we've got to look at have been reduced. And they've been reduced to the accounts that are payroll and benefit-related. And so, we've evolved into where we are now. And at the same time, our revenues have been flat. And we have not developed any major new revenue streams in several years. And so, when the economy was good and we were bringing in a lot of occupational tax, everything was fine. But now that the economy has gone flat and all of our revenues have gone flat, yet our expenses payroll-related are going up, there's just becoming a bigger and bigger gap every year. And we're not gonna be able to sustain this unless we've come up with a significant revenue increase from some source.
And I might point out, too, Commissioner Wilder mentioned just a little while ago about the Public Works' budget going down. And it's true, it's down. But, you know, some of the big items that we cut out of the budget, as Fred said, we've been cutting out our capital purchases. Jeff's got, you know, several requests for some dump trucks and things of that nature. Those aren't included in this budget, the capital items. We had to pull those because we couldn't, you know, we couldn't balance the budget. So, those are gonna be purchased out of other funds. So, that's why his Public Works budget's down because he's had to pull his capital items to offset, you know, what's going on with the salary and wages. It's all kind of, you know, tied together. But as Fred said, there's nothing you can do. You know, you can't do anything about pension costs and healthcare costs that continue to rise. It's just, especially pension costs, it's kind of out of our hands.
Well, I would say, may I, Mayor?
Sure.
That as a mother of twins, I pay a lot of money every month for other people to watch my kids and do programs. But I think we have great park systems. But if the, I don't know if the park system want to think about it, but adding more programs, the hard part is, is that we have nowhere indoor for this the last year round. But if you charged $150 per child for 100 kids, $15,000 a month times 52 weeks a year would be $780,000 for a revenue stream. You could take probably $250,000 of that out of an overhead cost. So, if we can start looking at an indoor recreational facility, there's a revenue stream that could help finance our budget. And that's just for 100 kids. That's not for everything else. So, maybe it's time that the city takes another bite in the rear and say, we gotta do something to provide for our community. And if we provide for our community, then we can still get an alternative revenue stream going, which is hard. No one wants to do it. But it's, something needs to be done in that department and for that revenue stream to come to our city. Versus losing a tax base of families that don't want to move to our town, but they want to move to another community that offers that stuff. They go hand in hand.
Okay. Before we move on in discussion, I just wanted to make a comment. Mr. Dawson is the messenger of our finances. As he has the numbers. And I would hope we don't start saying that this thing is political. Let's deal with the numbers. I think we have an honest, forthright, hard-working person dealing with this. And it's, don't subject it to, pleased to political discussions. Do you ever want to go ahead and...
That's what I'm saying, Mayor. Why can't we talk about the numbers? Let's talk about balancing the budget.
You have the floor.
Let's do it. So, my recommend, I mean, I agree that we need to consider revenue concerns. And I'd like some Commissioner Hedin's suggestions. some commissioner heading suggestions. I'd be happy to sell ads on buses, for example. That's a good idea. But I still think there's some cuts we could, we could make. And I know this will take, this will take a little bit of time, if y'all don't mind walking through, walking through some of this stuff. And I guess I've also got a couple of questions about, about particular lines. But on page six of packet one, which is the City Commission budget, we have a travel budget of $5,000. I think we could knock $2,000 off of that pretty easily. We haven't, we haven't actually spent more than $2,000 on travel, and most of that's just been fees for conferences. I don't know that anybody's even charged room or board, any commissioners charged room or board. I've gone to a couple of conferences, but I haven't even charged the travel to the city.
I'd be happy to just strike that whole thing, that whole budget for travel, to say...
I'll say this, actually, since last meeting, I struck that down, I struck $3,000 out of that. Took all of it, a thousand out of it's what I did. I don't know, but if you want to strike, you want to strike it, it's a strike.
So you're saying you took $3,000 out and took it down to two?
Yeah, I took three out of, yeah, I took it down to two.
Okay, that's fine. And I guess that's factored into the fifty-seven thousand?
Yeah, that's factored in, yes.
Okay.
I thought that was, I agree with you, I thought that was a logical place to...
That's one. That's easy. Let's hope they're all this easy.
Well, we'd do, I mean, we can trim that back even more.
I think it's good to have some in there, because I think the fourteen-hundred or so and the seven-hundred that we spent the year before, and I think that was well spent. That's, for example, some of that was spent on the, for a conference, for the conference on Waste Management that gave us a lot of information about the garbage program. In past years, it's been spent on a waste energy conference. I mean, there's, I think there's opportunities for us to educate ourselves that are worth... I, you know, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to say, I mean, every time, every time any money comes out of that budget, it's got to be done with the majority's approval. I mean, so we can certainly, you know, choose to disprove anything, but I don't know that we want to go ahead and disprove everything in advance. I think taking it from five thousand to two thousand is a good start.
Yeah, we can start there.
Conversely, in the next packet, in packet two, page four, in the City Manager's budget, I know this is a failsafe, too, but we keep budgeting $2,000 for contractual labor and spending zero. Surely, we could just knock that down to one thousand.
On page four with that one?
On page four, line, it's the contractual labor line. And I understand, again, that's the kind of thing where you want to have a little bit in there if something comes up. But surely, we could get away with one thousand instead of two thousand, especially if it hasn't come up in a few years.
Mr. Dawson, I think something...
The only thing I would like to caution, if I could, we haven't had it done every year, and we have to stay within our budget. So please confer with management before we make these changes, just to make sure that there's not anything coming up with these cases to run us out of our budget, because if we run out, you know, we're very tight right now. We're going to be, I think we're going to be very tight at the end of the budget year as far as actual versus budget. If we, if we run out of our budget, you know, the auditor's going to write, he's going to write us up, is what's going to happen. We're going to get, we're going to get a, you know, a qualified opinion, and I don't want to, I don't want to risk that. So we need to, we need to be thinking about that, just make sure that we can implement the strategies or implement a strategy to take care of the budget requests that we have today. That's all I ask.
I mean, nothing we, nothing we do here would impact our current budget, right?
No, not the current budget. I'm talking about controlling next year's budget, because as Fred said, just starting out, when he made, when he started the budget process, or started talking about the budget the other night, he said that this is a 362-year deal, you know, basically, because we start, we put the numbers in place, and then we try to control the numbers to make sure we stay within our budget. That's the only request I've made.
I mean, sure.
Because some of these requests, it's getting really tight for some of these managers, I'm afraid, you know, they've already went through and chopped out, you know, $57,000 worth of cost, I'm afraid. You know, I'm afraid we're going to, we're going to get tight.
Okay, no, I think, I think we are going to get tight, and that's what I'm trying, trying to do, is to, is to tighten, is to tighten our belt a bit more. I mean, we know, we know that if push comes to shove, let's say we cut contractual labor from $2,000 to $1,000. We haven't spent a penny on contractual labor in a few years. Let's say push comes to shove, and all of a sudden, we have to spend $1,500. Then, I mean, then we can make, we can pass a budget amendment for $500. We can always address that within the context of next year's budget or the next commission camp that needs to happen. But that just adds an extra layer of control in there to make it less likely that that money gets spent unless it's absolutely necessary. And as we've already seen, if we have, like, right, like, our current budget and lots of, and a number of departments, we budgeted more money than the departments actually needed, and they were able to cut back quite a lot. We would be coming in well under budget, except a lot of purchases are being made at the end of the year in this year's budget in an effort to keep costs for next year's budget down, which is only fair. But again, I mean, I think what that says to me is that this year's budget could have been a lot, could have been a lot tighter. And, I mean, we're not, if we take, if we take some of these lines down a little bit, worst-case scenario is that it requires a little bit of extra work to spend that money if it actually is needed next time around, because it's just a budget amendment.
As we go forward, just as a matter of methodology, Mr. Dawson, you've already made some reductions in some of these, some of these line items, and so...
The numbers you're looking at now are changed a little bit, because I, the numbers that were initially reported are a little different now, because I took, we basically took $57,000...
Understood.
...of expenditures out, and I can give you a copy of what's been taken out, but for example, for City Managers Department, we've already pulled $500 out of that, out of one of those accounts. So now I have to go back and look at the detail. I don't have everything written down at this point, but we, we went through and basically culled the numbers down.
That's, that's, that's great. And so if we come across any of those numbers in this discussion, like we did in the commission budget, then I assume you can let us know that that already happened. Right?
Yeah, I don't have all the, I don't have all those details, because there's a lot of different accounts that change at this point, but I can go back and, and look at it. Yeah, but I don't recall exactly what number we pulled on his specific item, but I know we already pulled $500 out of there. I think it might have been, I think it's out of your travel budget, actually.
So are you saying that you don't have a current, you don't have a copy of your current draft?
Yeah, I've got a draft. I didn't reprint everything, again, because, you know, we're, at this point, you know, we tried to, tried to cut the cost, and, you know, that 1% request, we tried to cut it back, so I didn't re, I didn't reprint at this point.
So, but I assume, I assume that you can follow on your draft, and, so I assume that your draft reflects whether or not contractual labor is still at $2,000?
I think it is. I don't think we pulled anything out of there.
So again, in this discussion, gosh, I hope we don't have to have this, this basic philosophical conversation of everyone in these lines, we're going to be here all night, but again, that's a line that I think we can take from $2,000 to $1,000.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and each of these things, we need, we need at least three people to agree in order to actually, to actually make these cuts.
Is the commissioners, if you go through this now, Commissioner Wilder's taking through line by line. Now, y'all want to go through line by line later and just think about, I just want you to think about what's happening there. And then if, if he goes through, please indicate whether or not somehow that you agree with this to help us move the process along.
Sure.
Because it takes three to make the change. So please do that. Would you...
Well, I mean, I don't see any problem. I mean, if we haven't spent any money in three or four years, and then we're still budgeting $2,000 every year for it, I mean, when you're looking at a place to cut money from, that's the place to cut money from. That's not where immediate need. So, I mean, I don't understand what issues we would have there if we cut it to a thousand.
Well, let me say, let me say this, just in defense. I know Commissioner City didn't want to go through this through every line item, and I understand that, but here's one of the issues that, and y'all have mentioned this several times at the, at the meetings in here, that there's a struggle for the clerk to keep up with the, with all the workload. And so that line item is basically there. If we need to bring in someone and we have to pay someone to support the clerk, that we can, we can take care of that issue because she's struggling with workload. So that's why that, that line item is there, and I can see that being, you know, an issue. I really can. Just FYI, but I see that being a struggle. And I don't know if Fred has any feelings about that as well, but, you know, if, excuse me, if Ramona needs to take a vacation, that, you know, then we might need to have, you know, some contractual labor to support her being able to do that.
Well, I think anything that affects the overall operations of the city might be considered in this particular line item. For example, right now, we're having a overall review of our technology, and we were fortunate enough, we did look, we had to look around for two or three accounts that would allow us to do this. And fortunately, in this particular year we're in, there was some money in IT plus some in sewer, and we put that money together, and we're presently having a review of our full, you know, technology system, electronic technology system. But had that money not been available, then you might have looked at the city manager's...
I saw the budget amendment.
Or, and there's some, there's some management things that, quite frankly, we have not addressed in certain types of training and things. I'm just really starting to get traction in my job, and if those things are not available under human resources, for example, we need sexual harassment, harassment training, we need some training for our department heads. And so this is general, general administration, and there'd be needs from time to time.
Those are cuts that are already made right there. So people say, okay.
Okay. I hear what y'all are saying, but you're, you're making my point for me, which is that we can, push comes to shove, we can spend this money, even if we take it out of the budget right now. If this, if this, you know, if these things need to happen, there are ways to make it happen. If it's possible to avoid spending this money, we should. And by putting an item in the budget that has proven unnecessary for the last few years, I mean, I'd just as soon make it a little bit more difficult to spend that money unless it's absolutely necessary. If it's necessary, it can be done. There are a number of ways to do it.
And, you know, you sort of have opposing theories here. One is that the money was there and available, but through the evolution that we've just gone in this last year, the department heads feel a need to spend that money before the year's over, or there won't be reoccurring money in the following year. So it has to be one way or another. It can't be both ways.
But we're seeing that happen. I mean, we're seeing the departments, right now, spending most of their current budget down to the nub, even though we could, we could be realizing pretty substantive cost savings. I mean, it's not a secret that some departments are good about returning money to the budget and that other departments seem to make an effort to spend all of their money at the end of the year.
Last year was pretty cross-the-board, wasn't it? In the past, I wasn't here two or three years ago, but it looked to me like a trend that most departments were returning money, and it seemed pretty, seemed pretty consistent.
Since I've been here, it's averaged about $550,000 returned back from budgets per year, and it's pretty much across the board.
Look, guys, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. There's no way around it. Revenue's going to be tough decisions, and I'm happy to talk about that, but we're going to have to talk about decisions along these lines as well. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that staff, staff just want us, you know, they just want us to raise taxes so they can spend as much money as they want, pretty cut and dry.
I don't think that's a fair statement.
Wow.
I'm sorry. We've, we've worked diligently on this budget, and it's, it's been, it's been a very sincere, very sincere effort on the part of all of our department heads, all of our staff, and I don't think that's a fair statement.
That, that may be. We still, I mean, the idea that we shouldn't, the idea that we shouldn't even be discussing making cuts this small to the budget, I mean, it's, I guess I need to know from the commission if, I mean, is there any sense, like I said, we've got 250 of these things we can make. We can carve a quarter million out in terms of $500 here and $1,000 there. I mean, is that something we're willing to discuss or not?
Commissioner, maybe one for me?
I think, I think it's always good for commissioners to, to go through and look at the budget, and I always do, and I think what we could do, maybe is a more efficient way to do this, just a suggestion, is if, if we all want to go back and write down and what we think we can cut, where areas that we can cut, and line item that out, and then submit that, before we come to the meeting, the staff can vet that through and make comments, so we can have Mayor, Commissioner Wilder, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Headen, and myself can, can do those, and we'll see very quickly, it gives staff time to look at those, to see how it's going to impact in various departments. It also gives them some, some time to go back and talk with their middle managers and frontline people to say, hey, if we cut a particular item, I don't, I'm not going to pull one out, but if there's an item that needs to be, well, the police department has, we have, we buy ammunition, so if someone were to propose it, nobody has, that's, for example, say, we're going to cut back on bullets, then they can come back and say, well, that's fine, but that's going to reduce our training opportunities, which has all kinds of consequences. I'm using that as an example, or tools for the garage. And then it gives the person who needed that particular item to come back up. But I think that would give everybody a chance to have five different inputs. We can all have staff vet it, and then we don't have to spend 10 hours or more going through each person doing it at a live meeting.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to know a department head putting them on the spot at a meeting like today, having not had a chance to look at this. They may not really be able to fully answer that, because they've had people in their departments come up from the bottom with budget requests. That's just my thought. And everybody still gets to have their line-by-line input.
And then you're suggesting then would be to delay the discussion for this?
Well, if we want to go line by line, I think it's...
I mean, I'm saying, yes, if we want to go line by line.
Yes, sir.
And then, or to take it up in our next session?
Either that or special meeting, but at least it has, we can see staff comments, and we can either agree with staff comments, or we can disagree, or we can challenge them to come up with why they disagreed or had a different opinion.